And I can ill afford to actually support something that is going on like this when it's not legal, much less the fact that the number of people that are showing up to these events become way more than what me or my staff can handle. Just a month ago, St. Helena had a trail ride that they couldn't stop because they don't actually have the ordinance that we have that will help that. Each parish and sheriff's office had to send seven deputies, Tan Spahoa five, to try to regain control of the Greensburg area, where 2,500 people showed up to this event. And, you know, I understand that what I'm standing here to some people may not be popular, but I'm the one and my people's got to go clean that up when it's over with, or when it happens. And if somebody's mad at me because I'm going to take the stance of what I think is right, I'd rather that than to see somebody lose their life. And that's what this conversation was all about with me and Mr. Banks. He's been very patient with me. I think he understands it. I can't go and provide security to an event like that. And so what I'm prepared to do when this happens is I'm going to have my deputies there, and they're going to pick up on the road and do the trail ride, and when they're off the road, we're not going to be there. Now, the ordinance also says that this is a zoning issue, and that it has to be enforced by the building inspector. Now, traditionally, the sheriff's office has provided the support for the building inspector when he's got to enforce things such as this, and if we're asked to do that, we will. But that's what it's really all about. I mean, we've got good ordinances here. They're in place for a reason. And, you know, I hate that Mr. Banks thought that he could do this and maybe thought that the sheriff's office was going to provide, you know, support for the event, but we just have them in the surrounding area. I mean, just a couple of years ago, we had ATV trail ride event, which probably really wasn't a trail ride event, but it was the event after whatever the trail ride was that people got killed. So, good point. It is, it's not the trail ride, it's the after event that typically causes the problems that I'm speaking about. And another thing is that most of the time when we have a trail ride, these are people that actually trail ride. And for the most part, most of these people are good. They want to get out there and ride the horse. They want to do their thing. But at the end of the day, these people that are causing the trouble with the event stuff that I'm talking about, typically those people don't even come to the trail ride. They come to the event, and they're oftentimes not even from the area where the event's being held.
All right, thank you, Sheriff.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to vote on this, to take action on the request to have a trail ride. You've got a motion in the second. He can have his trail ride.
Can I just say one other thing?
Please do.
I know that you all asked the sheriff, did he do everything he needed to do, but I'm not sure if he saw everything because the application had to come here. So, we do have everything for the flagman. We have a copy of the route. The only thing that I see we don't have, he said he went to the health officer. So, if you, with the sheriff not having a problem with it, if you all see no problem with it, can you do it contingent? On that last page that you see, we have Mr. Cox who signed off as the sheriff's approval. The health officer, it has the district attorney on here that needs to sign off, and 911, and Mr. Frosting needs to sign off according to your application, and it's just pretty much the sheriff has...
So, those people have not signed yet?
No, ma'am. I didn't, I stopped going because of having the... Yes, ma'am. That's why I didn't go. I came, I went to 911. The young lady, the supervisor wasn't in. I went to the health unit. And I told them, you know, I would just wait to see what would go on tonight, and I'll come back tomorrow and give her all the information about the porticans and whatever else I needed that they asked for. And I came here, and this is why I'm back here. But I promise you, this will be a non-profitable trail ride. It will start when it's supposed to, and it will end when it's supposed to.
So, you just need that motion to say that once everything is filled out...
Yeah, with the date, everything, we just really need Mr. Hill is here to be...
Give him the time to take...
Is here, and everything is fine. He did everything for the trail ride.
So, we have a motion in the second already, on continuous, and get those signed by the...
And we could wish you to get this...
This there people. Okay, no more discussion. In all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried. Now, number three, the sheriff got, he had us on that. That's okay too. Discuss, take action or request to have a harvest event on January 27th to 28th at 9316 Beast Grove Road. This is Clovis Banks and I do. But this is a special event. If we don't have a special event audit to enforce.
Well, he's, that's not going to be anybody. You're not having a special event.
Not having it.
Yeah, so you can stretch that.
Okay. Just a trail ride.
Yeah, right. And just for information, we have people around in other parishes, churches and stuff that have trail rides. I mean, they charge addition for the riders to be in the ride, and, I mean, everything goes well. I would be there. I would be helping them. And I can speak for Mr. Banks. He's had several rides in other parishes, and it went well, went fine, and he'll do whatever he's supposed to do.
Mr. Lewis, I'd like to say too, kind of piggyback off what Mr. Jason's talking about. It was recommended long ago from the sheriff that we work toward creating a event, event ordinance, and I'd like to see that proceed forward if we can do that.
I'm in process of going around trying to find some from different parishes now, and I'll get back with you tomorrow. Try to get a committee, get with Mr. Kent, and get a committee and get one drawn up, because we definitely need to do that.
Need one.
Because this is going to continue to come up, with other people besides this trail ride wanting to have different events, and we need to have something in place.
I totally agree. Let me, I coincide with that. Okay, let's move on. Take action on proposed amendments to subdivision ordinance. As we know, we had a public here dealing with our subdivision ordinance. We had a few tweaks involved. We were three concerned. One was the size of the servitude, 60 feet. Still, one lot, one acre lot, and a three-year security bar. Those are tweaks to the ordinance that we need to make.
So, everywhere that it says two acre, it should say one acre?
Really? What do you vote on?
But that's what you recommend?
Do we want to address the hard surface issue, or we want to leave that like it is as well?
With seven less than, with five acres, five lots of less, it'd be on a gravel servitude. Anything with six or more, it'd be on asphalt servitude, that'd be included.
And that was my question. Do you want to even consider the hard surface, that the five are less?
No.
No, just go with what we got.
Go from six in the book. You have to change the measures. Those changes. Instead of two acres, one acre. 60-foot servitude and a three-year...
Can you tell me where that is? You'll fix it? Thank you.
Those could be the changes to the...
I have one question. Do we talk about one acre density or one acre minimum?
I say density, but I'm only one juror.
I'd say density, and I'd say two acres.
I'd say one acre density.
One acre density.
Can I make that motion?
I make the substitute motion that we do two acres.
I say I do.
Okay.
Density.
Okay, we're going to serve two motion first. The two acre density instead of one acre. All in favor, the two acre density?
Missed.
It's a roll call vote. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dexter, this is the two acre density. Mr. Dexter Armstead, if you're in favor, okay. Mrs. Kristen Chastain?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle, I'm sorry, Mr. Michael Cheatham?
No.
Mr. Kyle Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Oliver?
Yes.
Dr. Chrissy Oakwin?
Yes.
That's five and three. President Kent, do you...
It passed.
No.
The seven two was passed.
No. The substitute motion was two acres.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
Yeah. That's what you just voted on.
That's what you just voted on.
Two acre density.
Yeah, two acre density, they voted on. Mm-hmm.
Yep, two acre density.
That was, yeah, that was the seven two motion, two acre density. The first one wasn't. Yeah, two acres, yes, it passed. Yeah, it did pass. And a 60-foot servitude, it's going to change, and get a three-year security bar. Those are the changes. Now, your motion to approve the proposed amendments to our subdivision ordinance, approve the ordinance.
So, move, say.
No more discussion. In all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried. We got the ordinance in place.
Can we do an effective date?
Tonight?
Tonight.
It's just passed.
It's just passed.
You could do it effective tomorrow. You don't want to give people, I mean, look through some of these dates on...
Let's say Monday night, the first Monday.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
It passed tonight, though. We figured effective tonight. Yeah.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning.
Mr. Moody?
Yes, sir.
Do you even need to address that y'all pass this tonight? Do you even have to say that the laboratory was lifted?
Oh, for the lifting, we'll turn it tonight. It'd be lifted.
Okay, I have one more question on the density, two acre density. So, if someone wants to do less than two acres, you just have to present what they're trying to do to the planning commission. It has to start there, and see if they can do less than that to still meet a two acre requirement.
Number one, state dividing ten acres, they can have five lots.
Yeah, I see.
Probably, you can do less than one, two acres, but it's got to meet whatever y'all say.
They got to be at least 12, five, minimum, and it's got to be no more than the maximum two acres per total length.
Mr. Turner? Yes, sir. Please come to the mic.
I'm George Turner from Ethel, Louisiana. I understand that you guys just took a vote for the two acres. I'd just like to say that it's very unfair that you don't take consideration for the majority of the people in your parish. Those that are considered a workforce and affordable. But anyway, my main reason for being here is that the vote was, what, five to three?
Yeah.
I think Mrs. Quinn's vote should be removed and her comments be removed because it's a conflict of interest to her on that item.
Because of the chairman of the...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman of the Plaid and Zone.
Can I, JR, okay, you know, I talked to you about something about this. So, we go on two acres, but we also, the people that needs smaller pieces of property, and though Mr. Moody says about variances, there is the avenue of helping people through a variance. Am I not right?
Yes, you can request that if you can't make the two acre density, say you have a one acre piece of property, and you want to divide it between two children, that'll be a variance to the two acre density because the one acre lot was created prior to this anyway. So, if you want a divided family exception, you ask for a variance. And if you want to give the house to the one child and the shop to the other child, that's doable. All they got to do is come to planning and zoning with that variance, and we'll make a recommendation to the jury. I mean, we want to steer away from variance as much as possible because the jury has the... This office is going to have to have a mechanism in place to track variances. Something that hasn't been done in the past, but it needs to be done. Anytime you grant a variance, it should be documented and followed up on.
I'm in hope that we grant less variance as possible.
Right.
I'm telling you, that's my field on grant variance.
Is there is a mechanism to help people that needs help?
Once they need help, it's a hardship, yes. Just to grant, just to grant, no.
That's right.
We want to start that process. Okay, let's move on. Say again?
What about the conflict of...
The steel, the steel.
I don't think that would apply because... The planning and zoning members are appointed and not elected, so I don't think that that would apply.
See, you're talking, it shouldn't be a conflict.
It went in front of the ethics board.
Yeah.
Six years ago, when I was appointed, she was running, and being I was appointed before, she was...
That's right.
That covered all.
That's right. That's right.
So, no action taken. Adopted Washington as official general for each fifth county parish.
I make that motion.
Second it.
Second by Mr. Armstead. Any discussion? Question from the audience. In all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried. Adopted 2025 liquor license for ready-to-go, 10 Louisiana.
So moved.
Move by Mr. Mills.
Second.
Thinking about the whole to jury. Any discussion? Question from the audience. In all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried. Okay, approved purchase of a 700-gallon trailer-mounted covert cleaner, $92,000.
For public works?
For public work, public.
So moved.
It come from, it come from our Road and Bridge Fund. No more discussion?
I have something, and I just want to, in case anyone's looking at the $92,000, you know, it's come before the jury before, and we were not able to get it on contract, so we did bid it out. It was on central bidding. We did advertise like we needed to, but no one did a bid. So, now that no one did bid on it, you are able to purchase it outright.
Okay, thank you now. Okay, take action on engagement of engineer for it. We got all in favor of that, the purchase of 700-gallon covert cleaner. In opposed, motion carried.
I'd like to say, y'all did mention it briefly, so the public fully understands when we talking about watching our money. We have, we have money in Road and Bridge. That's how we able to purchase this, because there's money in that account. We're not just throwing money away. It's, we have the money, and it's something that's needed.
It's not coming out of general fund.
It's not coming out of the general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Coming out of solid waste.
No.
Covert cleaner. We could...
What coming from?
It can come out, it can come out of solid waste.
Solid waste can.
Why would it come out of solid waste?
It's drainage.
It's a piece of equipment.
Think about Road and Bridge.
What is public? You have Road and Bridge, and then you also, it doesn't... The coverts, drainage, solid waste, and Road and Bridge, so...
Do coincides together, okay? Okay, discuss, take action on engagement of engineer for it.
So, just a brief discussion. Right now, you are not, you do not have engineers. You don't have a contract with engineers. Fort and Tablada has been gracious enough to help us with things, but they're, they're not your engineers. So, if you all would approve advertisement for RFQ for engineering services, it's time that we do.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
This is all about Mr. Mills. No more discussion?
And then just in the meantime, I just want you all to know, if there's something that you all need to do with engineers, we can speak with Fort and Tablada, since they've been helping us about doing different things. I know we have some stuff that we're working on with Lemonbee and some of the other roads, but the jury will have to, we can get quotes, the jury would have to pay for anything, anything that you all request, but there is not an engagement with engineering firm right now.
You understand, we don't have an engineering firm on retained or something.
Right.
Got a motion second to advertise. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried. Okay, let's move forward. Next on the agenda, if committee, I don't have anything. Personnel committee, that's a crucial point. Finance committee, Mr. Kyle Flanagan?
I have two items. Item A is approved monthly invoices, and that's a motion.
Any discussion? Question from the audience. In all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried.
Item B is recommendation to renew insurance with Dart Insurance on parish prison with buy-down excluding terrorism. Will Andrews.
Mr. Andrews. Say your name, please.
Will Andrews with Dart Insurance. Good evening, everybody. I met with the finance committee last week. This is the insurance renewal on the jail, and it comes up in June. And I guess it boils down to really good news, you know, if there is some.
Give me the good news for it. Just got to bend with that.
Well, the good news is there's, it's $459.31 different than what it was last year. So, the good news is it's not way up, like what we've been experiencing. So, it's plateauing out, and coverages deductibles would be the same as what you had last year. So, more, more stable. We're getting a little bit of stability going for now.
That's excluding terrorism. It might help to, I hope we don't, but...
That excludes.
It's excluding.
We haven't been taking that out.
No, we never have.
The motion was to take the wind buy-down deductible, buying it down to $10,000, because otherwise, it's like a $117,000 wind deductible, which means basically you're going to be paying for a roof if you had roof damage yourself. So, this buys it down to $10,000, which is a lot more palatable, easy to swallow. I'll answer any other questions that you have.
I make the motion that we redo the insurance with Dart Insurance.
Second it.
But I missed the McCray, thinking about Mr. Armstead. Any discussion? Question from the audience. In all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Public working equipment, Mr. McCray?
I don't have anything.
Yeah, we have one additional, bring it up under you, okay?
Okay.
That's the proof acceptance, the proof reclaim ask for, and donation from state job. Motion accepted.
Motion accepted.
Second.
No more discussion?
I have something. So, just, so you all will know, this is from the 1067 Smith Road, the state job. I don't know if Mr. Lewis did tell you the state job number. It's approximately 720 cubic yards, and you all have done this before. Mr. Hill is getting it stockpiled at the farm center, so just so you all are well, you all had to accept the donation.
Donation. Got a motion, so any more discussion? Question from the audience. In all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried.
One question for DPW. How about our pothole patches? They still sleeping over in Covington?
What time is it?
It'll be just about dead if it been there long enough to be slept.
We need to go ahead and scrap it.
Yes, indeed. It been there a while.
Yeah.
It ain't serving no purpose, I'm serious. It's not.
And just, I think, Mr., you've given an update about the part that we're waiting on and where it's coming from, right?
Yeah, it's immediate, it takes at least four, five months to come in.
So...
Must have come from childhood, huh?
Yes. Is that part covered, over everything?
Are you green?
So, the brand-new piece of equipment.
Anything else?
I don't have nothing.
Let's move on. Building properties, Mr. Richard Oliver. I mean, Mr. Dexter Armstead.
Yes. All right, thank you, Mr. President. I will pick up from the last meeting I had. I did finally get over to the clerk of office and put my eyes on those lights, and they are nice. They are beautiful. The ladies in the office, they really like them as well. They got, they enjoy the lighting in there, so that's all I have.
Even this building here?
Even this building here, that's for sure. Yeah, it's a lot better. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Administrative matters and treaty report, Mr. Harris.
So, for April, all the bank reconciliations have been done and viewed by either Mr. Flanagan or Ms. Oakwin. Ms. Oakwin will be also looking at the reconciliations going forward, so just wanted to let you all know that.
You got a recommendation?
Oh, so that's coming from the DPW director. The probationary period is up for Mr. David Hanes. The evaluation was done by his supervisor, the DPW director, and it's for a change to the status, permanent with the step increase according to your policy.
Motion?
And our, I have a question. At our last meeting, we had paperwork that showed... He had paperwork. Like, but not, okay. I should never have missed the happen here, or not? No, he did, he did the last time, but we had that you could... Okay, so I was just curious.
Mr. Oakwin?
And I have a question, and maybe you said it and I missed it in the conversation. His position is what?
He's an operator.
Operator, okay. I didn't know if you said that or not.
I don't think so.
You mean the provision, now he's a permanent hire. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carried. You think that's Mr. Harris?
No, I don't have anything. You have anything, Mr. Hill?
Okay, let's move on. Home security, Mr. Darrell Beal. Oh, good. Thank you, Mr. Beal. Okay. Commissioning board with planning and zoning. I have a, I take a motion to approve everything, but him at the moment.
Everything except for what?
We're going to vote on him separately.
Him?
Yeah.
Except for him?
I know, but we're going to vote on this separately, because Mr. Aldo has to recuse himself from that vote.
Oh, okay. Do math first.
Yeah, we'll do math first, now come in.
I make it by preference.
Okay, second. Roll call, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Dexter Armstead?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Oliver?
Yes.
Dr. Chrissy Oakwin?
Yes.
President Louis Kent?
Yes. Motion pending. Next on the agenda, recommend approval of rezoning 130 Colonial Drive, 1105.
I need to make a correction. It's 1450. I don't know what it got 130 at.
1450?
It's according to I-1, it was 130 was the restaurant address, but it's only going to be 1105 after we do.
It's 1415 Colonial Drive. That's what it, when I bought the place, it was 1450. When I sold it, it's 1450. And 1105 is on Longwood.
Eight to K. It would have been supposed to have been L, eight to L. It would be changed to, from C2 to R4. Roll call on it. Say again?
Yeah, about the address is correct?
Is that address correct? Yeah, that's it.
We can't do it, the address not correct. Where the mix-up come with the address?
Yeah, we can't do that.
There could be a change of address, right? Explain it to you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, Mr. Turner?
The sign was posted at 1105. That's going to be his main entrance to the thing. The two pieces of property, the old restaurant and the original RV park out there was at two entrances, and it's, he's going to one entrance, which is going to be off of Longwood, and it's going to go from 38 to 37 lots total after he takes down the restaurant. So, it's not going to be, not going to be an entrance on Colonial at all. That's, the property is now going to be all on together on 1105. That's the rezone.
You understand, Mr. Oliver?
Well, they got to move a trailer to be able to make that an entrance, because there's three entrances there.
He's got to do math.
Please come to the mic and explain yourself, please. Thank you. Say your name, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Bill Wood Smith. I'm here representing the property located at 1105 Longwood.
As well as the address I have on my purchase agreement is one zero one four Colonial. So there's obviously some address confusion. What this gentleman said is correct. Now, the existing entrance on Longwood will remain and the existing entrance exit to the east of the restaurant building at the corner of Colonial and Longwood will also remain. So there will be no ingress egress challenges. And I have a number of graphics explaining it if that doesn't make any sense.
I don't, I don't have, I'm just, I know what the number, I know
Yes, sir.
Spots say, I don't have any problem with it.
Yes, sir.
Welcome you to the neighborhood. You got any questions, you come ask me, I own it long time.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that.
That'd be a change from C two to R four. Planning done for address change?
No, he got the
Well, the zoning, the zoning.
Five is the right, it's on the same piece of property, whatever it works out, the nine one one has their database. When I looked it up, it had the restaurant address with one thirty on it, the nine one one database. That's the only reason it's there. He didn't even put that on his applications. And that's to do with eleven oh five. I was just trying to clarify that for us, that we had two pieces of property.
So this is correct.
I make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Oliver, recuse yourself for the
It's a simple address.
Just crunching the roll call, please, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Dexter Armstead?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Oliver?
Not voting.
Okay, but he's recused himself.
Dr. Chrissy Oakwin?
Yes.
President Lewis Kent?
Yes.
And this is the way we're going to send it to the assessor's office, so I just want you all to know that.
I have the property's legal description right here that I'm going to provide to you, so there's no confusion. Tax assessor ID, parcel ID, address, et cetera.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Now, most of the approval, recommend approval, continue C two zoning due to the fact that utilities and tenant use never change for thirteen four forty-three Howard Ten.
Make a motion.
Second it.
Any more discussion?
I do need to, it's usually referred to as one three four four three and one three four four five. It's going to be one three four four five, but we'll fix that. I just want to make sure that
Two drives.
It's just a
Two drives, we got just one drive, right?
That is the correct one.
Okay. Motion?
Uh I just wanted, I had a question and I want to ask Mr. Sam. I'm not against this, but I want to make sure when we do this, this is not going to be in conflict with any of the litigation that we're involved with currently.
So it came from planning and zoning, so it just comes to y'all for approval?
For approval.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Say it again? Roll call again, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Dexter Armstead?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Cheatham?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Oliver?
Yes.
Dr. Chrissy Oakwin?
Yes.
President Lewis Kent?
Yes. Always for information only, okay? No action need to be taken on. Oh, it's just information only.
Can I make an objection for L, we skipped L, we did eight two K.
That's for sure.
Yeah.
We missed L.
We missed L, they said eight two K.
Okay, you did. And make a motion, motion?
I'll say.
Okay. Roll call for him, Mr. Harris.